All right, I'm gonna call the September 13th meeting of the Macon County Board of Commissioners to order. I'd like to welcome all of you. We've got a good crowd tonight, so it's good to see some faces here with some interest of what's happening in Macon County. So, welcome. Let's get rolling. Looks like we've got a pretty good agenda tonight. Any announcements?
Mr. Chairman, I do have a few announcements. First of which, we'd just like to take some time, received a letter from the Government Finance Officers Association. The Governor's Finance, or Government Finance Officers Association of the United States and Canada has awarded the Certificate of Achievement for Excellence in Financial Reporting to Macon County for its annual comprehensive financial report, ended fiscal year June 30, 2021. This certificate is, of achievement, is the highest form of recognition in the area of governmental accounting and financial reporting, and its attainment represents a significant accomplishment by government and its management. I would like to take time to recognize Ms. Lori Carpenter and the Finance Office for the excellent job they do. We receive this letter every year, and it's by no accident. We have a great, a great finance department, and Lori does a great job with that. Secondly, pleased to report that the approximately $10 million renovation project at Macon Middle School has been completed and received a certificate of occupancy. This project, which was slated to be completed in November, is again now complete, and we have about 148,000 remaining in the contingency fund at the completion of this project, which, what that means is, we finished on time and under budget. So, that never gets old to say, and I tell you what, that's, they did a bang-up job out there with that facility, and I encourage you, if you get the chance, to go out there and take a look. It's, it's definitely going to serve our students well for many years to come. The last announcement I have is, received a letter regarding, it's addressed to the Macon County Commissioners from the Western North Carolina Zoological Sanctuary, and basically, the, it's estimated today that there are only around 8,000 cheetahs left in the wild. And with that being said, breeding these cheetahs in zoological parks is very challenging. One of the things that makes these very, that makes breeding these cheetahs very challenging is the fact that a lot of the cheetahs that are too young to breed, and a lot of the cheetahs that have passed breeding age are held in these facilities as well, which take up space for the, these cheetahs that are of breeding age. So with that being said, the Cheetah Conservation Center has partnered, partners with Cheetah Sanctuaries to house these older and younger cheetahs that, that are taking up space in these breeding facilities. With that being said, there is going to be a zoological sanctuary located in the Burning Town area that houses these cheetahs. So, that's, with that being said, the, the Bob and Christina Miller, who will oversee this sanctuary, it is a 501(c)(3), it requires no federal, state, or local support, it's all privately funded, and works with the Cheetah Conservation to, to house these animals. With that being said, they, they have issued this letter to Macon County to make the Board of Commissioners aware. In reviewing the letter, and certainly am willing to, to answer or defer any questions to anyone that knows more, they have asked a letter of, of authorization from this board, which we have no regulations in place that would prevent this from occurring. So I think just the board's acknowledgement of receipt of this letter, the acknowledgement of this facility being located in Macon County, that, that's simply enough. I don't think we have to go any further than that, just making you all aware, and if anybody has anything they would like to add at this time. Ronnie, I think you're-
Well, it's not for public, it's, it's not for public viewing, they try to keep these cats. It's with the Metro Richmond Zoo. That's who, that's who we'll be working with during this whole process. And they'll come about eight months, after three years, and they can be moved on to a zoo, about. But it's not for, they want to keep them as far away as public as possible. It's certainly going to be a secure facility, and they're very interesting animals, after seeing them. They weren't many of them called us agents when I grew up, but-
(laughing)
But they're very interesting animals. Mr. and Ms. Miller is investing a lot of money, have they already invested a lot of money in this community and other avenues that you probably never would dream of, but we think it's going to be a very unique experience for the county, and we look forward to working with them, and so if we can, if you could apply a letter, Mr. Manager, and anybody's got any questions about this, I'd be, I'd try to answer them. What little I know about cheetahs is, not much, but it's interesting to watch them, I'll tell you that. But it's, it's going to be a very nice facility, it'll be even much better than, and above specs from the USDA. That's who really governs this, it's the United States Department of Agriculture, so-
Are you taking questions now?
Yes, I guess.
Do suggest to the owners or the authorities that they make films that can be shown at the library? I think the public would be very interested in-
I think that's a good idea. Lori, you do good.
We might even pay to see them.
I think that's a good idea. The first cheetahs are scheduled to arrive if the facility's ready at least late December, before the 1st of the year. We're going back to Richmond, I think, next week, week after. So, it's, it's an interesting thing, and there's certainly nothing like it here, so it's very restricted on what you can and can't do, and of course, the safety of the animals and the safety of the environment is utmost, and certainly with the fencing that has to be required in the space, that'd be about two acres, can't speak.
Mr. Attorney, with that, with that being said, as the county has no regulations that would prohibit this, and they're regulated by state and federal agencies, do you suggest just us, this is for informational purposes, and just leave it at that?
Correct, correct. Yeah, we don't have any process by which to issue the letter of authorization, can't find future boards to any type of such thing, so we don't have anything, we have any-
All right, any further announcements?
The Macon County Fair, want to be sure and put in the announcement, Macon County Fair will be kicking off a week from tomorrow?
No.
Yeah, a week and tomorrow.
Tomorrow?
Today's, tomorrow's the 14th, right? So, we want, we're looking for a great attendance, we're the last true agriculture fair left in North Carolina. So we would like to, we want a good attendance. We always have a great attendance. If you've not got a new fire catalog, give your name back there to Mr. Phillips, or anybody that's, that's working that desk, and we'll make sure you get one. Thank you.
Anybody else, anything? All right, floor rise, let's observe a moment of silence, and ask Commissioner Higdon, ladies in the place, September-
Mr. Chairman, as we take a moment of silence, I think we would be remiss not to remember school board member Tommy Kay that recently passed away.
Thank you. one on an individual basis, and everyone will have opportunity to speak if you want to, according to each one. So I'm gonna call the first public hearing regarding the 2023, 2023 Schedule of Value Standards and Rules. This is in regards to the Schedule of Value Standards and Rules that will be used for the upcoming tax reappraisal of real property. We received copies in our August meeting, notice has been run in the papers, and Abby here? There you are. Any questions for Abby?
Any changes since we looked at it before, Abby?
No, sir.
We have two people sign up to speak, but there may have been a mistake with this. Anyway, Hazel, did you sign up to speak for that? Okay.
They didn't have the worksheets out there.
Okay. You want to be on the, the regular comment?
Yes.
Okay, I'll move you over there. Is it Breann Hudak?
Yes, same thing.
Same thing, okay.
I'll recall.
All right, is there anyone that would like to address the board regarding the Schedule of Value, Values, Standards and Rules? It's a tongue twister. Going once, going twice, board? Any questions? We'll close the public hearing. Chair will accept a motion.
Make a motion.
Motion. Thank you, Commissioner Shills, motion to approve the 2023 Schedule of Value Standards and Rules. Can we get a second?
We cannot approve it until the next meeting, it has to be-
Well, thank you for the correction.
The public meeting has to be held seven days before the approval, so we'll do it at the next meeting.
Well, thank you for the correction.
You're welcome.
So everybody's gonna have another chance to speak about it.
We didn't call in on that, Mr. Chairman.
Sure.
This is the Schedule of Values, can you give the public and all of us a schedule of events regarding the reevaluation?
So in January, January 1st is when it's supposed to take place. We will have about 20 days into January where we get everything ready, and we will mail out a letter to all taxpayers letting you know what your new value is. It will also explain what your process is when you appeal, if you wish to appeal that value. You will mail that back in, there will be an informal review, and then after the informal review, we will mail you back a letter telling you if we did or did not change your value and what the new value is, and then it will also explain that you can come before the Board of Equalization Review, which usually starts in the second week of April. It can go through December, so there's plenty of time through that, but you will have the opportunity to appeal your value to a Board of Equalization Reviews at that time. And that will all be explained in letters sent to you in January, and then if you appeal, it will be explained again when you get your new letter.
And you'll assess, you'll assure us that the assessments are going down, right?
If you want to talk about assessments, you can come to my office anytime. Business hours.
She takes her job very seriously.
That's way too long the conversation for tonight.
All right, I'm gonna call our next public hearing to order. Proposed resolution request that the North Carolina Wildlife Resources Commission undertake rulemaking for the purpose of establishing a new no-wake zone in the Little Choga Cove area of Nantahala Lake. Looks like the, has been run in the paper, August 31st edition. Somebody had a chance to review the no-wake zone, does anybody like to speak regarding that? Jim Strauss, I got your name down here, thank you. Come on up.
Okay. Thank you. My name is Jim Strauss, I'm representing some of the residents of the Little Choga Cove area, Lake Nantahala. I spoke last month, I don't know that I need to repeat everything. The only thing I'd say that potentially is new, I sent out a request to notify all the residents that we were applying for no-wake zone. We got a letter of support from roughly 20 homeowners in the community, representing 27 lots. And so, you know, again, there's nothing new, it's a safety measure, we appreciate you taking the matter in hand. I want to thank Joe for, Joanne of Macon County for helping, you know, get this ball rolling, and hopefully, you know, you guys will recognize the need for it. That's all I got. I don't know if you want the letters, that's part of the package I sent to Joe.
Any questions?
Did you have anybody that disagreed?
We did not have any diss, at all. So.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you.
Anybody else like to speak regarding the no-wake zone? All right, I'm gonna close the public hearing, board, back to where we were a minute ago. Get a motion to approve.
I also can make a motion for that neighborhood, this is, we're the head of the Wildlife Resources Commission, to please take a close look at it, so if that is true, I make a motion to approve.
All right, we have a motion by Commissioner Bell to approve the resolution.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Shills, any further discussion? All in favor? Aye. Thank you, gentlemen. All right, I'm gonna call our third, Macon County Community Transportation Program Application. Welcome.
Thank you. Good evening. As you can see right now, I'm only bringing two grants to you. The reason I'm not bringing the capital yet is because we don't have prices on vehicles.
Okay.
So, the first one is the administrative grant, we're ask, it has a 15% match, and we're asking for 32,891 to match our administrative grant. This is for FY '24.
And what was the total?
The total grant is 219,268.
And this amount was, can you repeat that, please?
For FY '24 administrative, that covers the administrative salaries, fringe, office supplies, advertising, marketing, drug testing.
Can you repeat that amount, I'm sorry?
219,000.
Our portion, county's.
Oh, your portion?
Yes.
32,891.
Now, when you say 23, is that, is that next year's budget?
24, next year.
24.
23, 24?
Yes.
Right there?
Yes.
State starts early.
And where would the other 100, 100,000 come from? I see 132,891, our, our part is 32,891.
That's on a separate grant. The first one's 32,891 for the administration.
Thank you.
And then for the grants that we, like she said, the state starts early, these will be incorporated into the FY '24 budget. Transit's one of those departments like housing that is largely grant-funded through a state, in this case, a state agency. So, you know, when you look at the transit budget, although, you know, I think the transit budget this year, I can't recall off the top of my head, but there's only a certain portion, about 160, 170,000 dollars, that's actually county funding. And that county funding is largely matching the state grants that allow the transit to operate. So this is the process, we just, we do this every year at this time, the administrative grant, the other grants Darlene will discuss also, those are the transit grants that allow them to operate, which we, we're just responsible for a massive portion of.
Now Lori, do we have to put anything, that money's set aside, so do we have to, for the 23, 24 budget, so we don't have to do anything?
No.
But you show that it is, it was approved.
All right, any further questions? I've got no one else sign, have no one sign up to speak regarding the Macon County Community Transportation Program. Would anybody like to? All right, I'm gonna close the public hearing. Thank you.
Thank you.
Get a motion to approve the-
Oh, yeah, if you could sign your conflict of interest forms, please.
That's, that's supposed to be handled.
Are they all up here?
Yeah, you all have one, except for Mr. Tate.
We have a motion by Commissioner Young to approve. Second. Got a second by Commissioner Shills, all in favor? Aye. Thank you. Thank you. All right, we're gonna move on to public comment period. Morel, welcome.
Thank you.
Sounds like we're gonna have some videos, cheetahs.
This is such a pleasure to speak today with us coming down toward November in just six weeks. I did want to let the commissioners know how proud we are as Moconians of the job you've done under very difficult circumstances. Probably all of us would agree that the 1931 to the 39 period was the worst this country's ever experienced, but '20 to '22 comes mighty darn close, and for you all to do such a good job in taking care of us, we are very grateful. At the moment, there are some 91 million people in America who have contracted COVID. Out of a population of 330, that's around 27%. But here in Macon County, it was 9,200 versus a population of 34,000, that's 20%. So our numbers are significantly lower, and we're very grateful. The other exciting thing that I'm very pleased to log you on is the work that's been done on the greenway. As you know, you've authorized and successfully completed the repairs to the shelter on the Rotary Circle. The kids have a brand-new set of entertainment toys for them to ride at the Big Bear Shelter. And the paved, pavement between the northern and the central section under the, what is that, Bridge Number 10, is very successful and works quite well. We're so grateful for that. The new dog park is a great success with people. The coffee shop has stayed operating under difficult circumstances. Your crew, Jerry and Terry, have continued to maintain the grass areas impeccably, so it's a very attractive greenway, and they've installed very attractive fencing to keep people from falling in on the stream tributaries. So there are only three places that are, that need assessed, attention. The three gravelled areas on the southern section, obviously the Rotary Circle embankment that collapsed needs shoring up. The pavement is fine, but you've got to put those boulders in soon, or probably this winter will make it something very expensive to repair in the near future. And the access between the newly, access under the bridge to the central portion needs to connect with the greenway proper. And fortunately, I have very good news on that subject. I've talked with Charles Lupoli, all of you know him as the owner of the-
He's fine.
Exactly, I didn't have that name quite proper. He is very agreeable, and he said if the, if the county pays for putting a path to connect those two on the gravelled portion of his parking lot, he would not have a problem with that. So, Mr. Attorney, you probably ought to get a letter of understanding out on Monday morning, so that we confirm that. So if you could take those measures under advisement and act on them quickly, we've got two months before the cold weather comes. All three of those projects could be done by Thanksgiving, if you act on it properly. Thank you.
Thank you, Your Honor.
Thank you, Your Honor.
All right, Hazel, welcome.
Thank you. I'm here for two things. One, first one, most, one of the most important, is the Board of Elections is getting ready to hit you up. I've spoken on this before, we need new machines. And we've got the funds, but I'll tell you something, I've done some research today, and if the county don't want to go into that pot, the community and the county can get together and raise that money, because did you know that the county, the community got together and built the hospital? They raised, and they're like the time, if I'm, if I'm not mistaken, over $6 million the community did when Angel was built. Let's just didn't know that, but I did, I got that out today, done research. But the community is what built Angel Community Hospital, that's why the name was changed to Angel Community Hospital, because the community raised the money. Second thing is, is at the park, that matter what park you go to in Macon County, whether it's out there at the Wesley Park, whether it's out there anywhere, there's no equipment for handicapped kids. And it's heartbreaking when a parent takes a handicapped kid out there and they can't play on anything. That's something we need to look at. As the, as the county and the community, we're supposed to be for all of our children, but we're leaving those children out. There's nothing. The mom was, she was in tears, just moved here a couple of months ago, and nothing for her child to do in any park in Macon County. So we need to look into that. I told her, I said, I'm going to the Commissioners' meeting, I'm gonna make them aware of that, because I did not realize it myself. But if you go out there and you look, there's not one piece of equipment that a handicapped child can play on. And we need to be for all the kids, not just certain kids.
Thank you.
Sound like high school.
All right, Brianna, welcome.
Thank you. So, good evening, everybody. My name is Breann Hudak, and my family and I just moved here in the last year from Charleston, South Carolina, so we went from the beach to the mountains, and we're loving living here. I'm a resident on Peaks Creek Road here in Franklin, in Macon County, of course, and I spoke with Derek Rowland, Mr. Rowland, last week about making an inquiry, and he invited me to share my inquiry with all of you tonight. So my inquiry, being on Peaks Creek Road, involves the Old Pine Grove School, and I was curious, I know the county owns the school, but I was curious if I could acquire the building. A little background knowledge about me, in Charleston, I was a principal of a K-12 school and have served in numerous administrative and educational roles there, so I've just been watching over the last year, Old Pine Grove School not being utilized as a school anymore, being a voting precinct area, which I would keep, of course, because you could have that day off for a school, but- But just wanting to know if there is a possibility of acquiring the building to renovate it back into a school here in Macon County, from Macon County. And that was it.
Mr. Chairman, I think that we would have to look and see, because we've got some grants to redo that school.
Okay.
And to see, I think, I'm not mistaken, that it can be leased, like to a community building or a nonprofit or anything like that. But I'm not so sure we can say we'll have to research that. I know when we did all the work on that old school, that it was mostly volunteer, but it took a lot of work.
Right.
To bring it back to where it is.
Yes.
I think that's what we have to find out, because we did get some grants, and we'd have to, Mr. Fay and some others, to see where that money come from. That's, that'll go back several years.
Okay.
But I do recall that I think it needs to be used.
Yes.
Some of the folks up there that, that really kept, you know, that was having regular meetings and, and unfortunately, a lot of those passed away.
Yes, after doing my research on it, I saw how historical it was, and I just thought, wouldn't it be great to bring it back to a school and keep it in the community and, you know, be able to utilize it as what it once was?
Yeah.
So, yes, any information you can provide to me would be greatly appreciated.
Mr. Yaw. I was just going to give you a consensus. Due to legality, I don't know what our position could be if we were to sell it, but I as well want to see the best purpose for that building. And I feel like right now, we're not doing that. We still maintain the facility, the building, the roof. I know the county spent several thousand dollars in tree repairs, not by us. And, just to clarify, listen, I'd like to see the highest and best use for that property. I don't think we're doing that right now, but if you're asking for a consensus, I'd love to see somebody use it. And I do know it has close ties to this community, you know, in, from a generational standpoint.
Yes.
So I know there's, I don't feel like I'm saying that lightly, but from the county's position, I think at this point in time, it's a financial liability.
Okay.
With any, have the search revealed any?
I've, I've got Eric. I've already, I spoke with Eric, and then he's going back through and looking right now. So.
I appreciate it.
What kind of school?
I was thinking just a small private school.
What grade?
Elementary. I'm most comfortable with elementary.
K through eight or K through five?
K through five, yes, sir. If we needed to matriculate up and had community support, I would be interested in doing that. But I think that school is a great foundation to just start a very small private school with elementary ages.
And we, when we did all the work on the school, a lot of those volunteers did work, and you'd need to get with Jimmy Teames, first of all, a fire marshal.
Yes, sir.
Because that school was not, we tried to build it back the way it was.
Right.
We did put a bathroom in.
Hey, there you go.
But you, you know, if that, if it gets along, just get Mr. Teame and Derek and hit you with that.
Sure.
Make sure the fire code for a school is a whole different world.
Yes. Yeah, I've done my research on North Carolina and how to create and authorize an independent school here, so I would, of course, follow through with the guidelines and procedures and the protocols here as well in the county.
And I agree with you all, it needs to be, you know, it needs to be used.
Yes.
Once we've, once we've found out some things as far as the title and whatnot, I got your email, so I'll keep you in the lead.
Okay, that sounds good. Thank you.
Is there anyone else who'd like to address the board? All right, we'll move forward. Are any additions to the agenda?
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman, if we could, Mr. Tommy Jenkins is here from the EDC. If we could move him to the top of the reports and presentations, he has a prior commitment, but he nonetheless has some information from the EDC he would like to share with us. Also, if we could remove item number 10A, item 10A under old business, we'll be removing up, date on J and B franchise agreement. We'll be removing item 11E.
He is an Edward. He is an, he is an elephant.
Yes, he is. Consideration of viewing site, got a little more work to do on that. And we'll also be removing item number 13A. We're going to take that up. We've got a couple more vacancies coming online with the planning board here in the next, in the coming month, and we'll just take all those vacancies up in November.
Okay. Any other additions, changes?
As always, a quick update, we've got Tom over in Nantahala, just a quick update on the Nantahala Library.
Sure. Yeah, I've got, got some information on that. We've had a very difficult time getting architects to go over there and look at that site over there. We did, we have received $700,000. We have $500,000 that's coming from county funding that's been appropriated for that building, and we've got additional $200,000 from the state. So that brings the, the grand total of funding for that renovation project in the Nantahala Community to $700,000. Thus far, we had had about four architects that had declined to give us a quote on the project. We, we did receive a quote earlier in the month from, from one of the architecture firms, Novus Architecture. That quote was around $78,000 to, to do the architectural work on that building. So that immediately, we were working with, with them. So if, with that being said, we were prepared to, as that was over the $50,000 threshold that would be required to exempt architecture services from the North Carolina bidding statutes, we were prepared to come to the board and, and, you know, say, hey, we're going to have to put this thing out to a full-fledged bid. That's the only proposal that we're getting back. I spoke with Jack, he called me at 10 minutes till 6:00, and we had been working with another architecture firm, MHA Architects. A gentleman named Peter Looper had actually met Jack on site over there, Jack Morgan, our project manager. Met him on site, and while that, they're not going to be, at this time, the last communication we had with them, they wouldn't be able to start until January, they did, he did tell Jack, gave him a quote of $28,000 to, to do the architectural work at Nantahala, which is under that bidding threshold. So with that being said, in the coming months, with this information just coming up today, I would be, you know, if the board so desires, we can work with Mr. Looper to, to firm out that proposal and have you all something back to look at in October. But, but with that being said, I, I just received that, that phone call from Jack Morgan before this meeting. They had met on site last week. And so, MHA Architects, Mr. Peter Looper, has given us a proposal. It does appear to be within the range to allow us to exempt that proposal from having to go through bids. And with the board's consensus here tonight, I can attempt to, to get an agreement together and bring it back for your consideration in October.
You good?
Yeah, if we made an architect, a lot of us folks in the Nantahala, we're getting pretty old, it's hard to waste six months of money.
You don't bother bringing bananas, huh? And I did ask, I did ask Jack, I said, is the, I said, is his January timeline still on? And he said, we didn't discuss that, but we at least got back and have that information built into that proposal in October. And if the board's amicable to what they see, we can move forward. If not, we can, we can back up and punt. But, but we have had an extremely, extremely difficult time getting an architect.
It's a slow project, it's out of this remodel. Jack is through with the middle school, right? So he's got some time? He did the community building, did he do the Nantahala Library?
I mean, I, certainly, we, you know, the, the community building, we did have, we did, Tom did do architecture work on, on the community building, yes, I, I looked at that. So we did, while Jack did oversee the project, we did have architect.
And we need an architect for this job. It's a square building.
Right.
Needs HVAC, electrical, and Jack has a level of qualified in Jack to dictate what that would be. Couple of walls, frames, some plumbing, painting.
Why don't we let Derek just handle that and let him go to Jack and get Jack's opinion on it?
Better than just Tom.
Be more than happy to. I can bring a proposal.
Jack, I just hate for us to kick the can down 30 roads, so if Jack's not interested in handling that, if he thinks we need an architect, then I think that Derek needs to proceed. That way, we don't have another, you're, you're, okay with that?
Absolutely.
I'll have both that answer as well as attempt to get a proposal together for an architect and have each of those things here at the October meeting.
You good with that, Tom?
Yes.
Absolutely. Thank you for driving up, standing there.
I'm like you, I don't know where I'm going to be tomorrow.
Snuff your toe, I'll catch you. Thank you, Tom.
You bet.
Thank you, Derek.
Yes, sir.
All right, reports, presentations, our EDC, sorry, do you have something?
Are we still in additions?
We are, we need to approve that, so thank you.
I need to add one, please. Under consent agenda, 12 fee budget amendments, if I could add number 57, please. And I'll put a copy of that on all of your monitors.
Okay.
Thank you.
Anything else? Can I get a mic?
Just need a, just need a...
Good, thank you. I'm about to approve the agenda. First by Commissioner Young, second by Commissioner Higginson, in favor. Reports, presentations. Tommy, I was trying to get you out of here.
Thank you, sir.
Mr. Tom Jenkins, welcome.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Commissioner. It was good to see you all again. Derek, first of all, the Macon County Economic Development Commission appreciates your leadership in the referendum for the quarter cent sales tax, taking the lead in that and offering that to the voters. During the September 8th meeting at the EDC, the, the commission, the Economic Development Commission took up a resolution supporting your efforts and also the passage of the referendum. And I've asked if County Manager Rowland, as clerk, could, could read that short resolution for the public, right? Would that be permissible, Mr. Chairman?
Sure. I'm from an advisory board, and I slid them. Resolution of support for the levy of a one-quarter cent county sales and use tax. Whereas the North Carolina General Assembly has enacted the One Quarter Cent County Sales and Use Tax Act, Article 46 of Chapter 105 of the North Carolina General Statutes, which authorizes counties to levy a local sales and use tax. And whereas in order to levy the local sales tax, Macon County must conduct a special advisory referendum on the question of whether to levy a local sales and use tax, and the election shall be held in accordance with the provisions of North Carolina General Statutes 163-287. And whereas the Macon County Board of Commissioners is faced with extraordinary funding pressures resulting from the need for capital projects for the Macon County school system, and whereas the Board of Commissioners of Macon County have, by unanimous vote, resolved to offer the possibility of such additional sales tax to the voters of Macon County in an advisory referendum pursuant to North Carolina General Statute 105-537. And whereas the Macon County Board of Commissioners have stated its intent to use the revenues from the Article 46, one-quarter cent county sales and use tax, if approved by the voters for Macon County, for capital projects of the Macon County school system. Whereas, a referendum has been called during the normal time, the polls are open on Tuesday, November 8, 2022, at which there shall be submitted to the qualified voters of Macon County, the question stated below. The form of the question to appear on the ballot and in the instruction to voters for said referendum shall be as follows: for, against. Local sales and use tax at the rate of one-quarter percent in addition to all other state and local sales and use taxes. Now therefore, be it resolved by the Macon County Economic Development Commission that, one, the Macon County Economic Development Commission endorses and supports the Macon County Board of Commissioners, resolution calling a special advisory referendum for the levy of a one-quarter cent county sales and use tax dated March 8, 2022, for capital projects of the Macon County school system. Two, the Macon County Economic Development Commission supports the passage of a local sales and use tax referendum at the rate of one-quarter percent in addition to all other state and local sales and use taxes for capital projects of the Macon County school system. Adopted at the September 8, 2022, regular meeting of the Macon County Economic Development Commission, signed Roger Plemons chair, attested Tommy Jenkins, Macon County Economic Development Commission.
Thank you.
Very short.
Yep. And borrowing liberally from the county attorney's past resolution. But I'd like to say is that the EDC, by a vote of nine to one, voted to endorse this resolution. Some of the comments about it was that the improved safety and security of a new campus, not to mention the ADA compliance issues that would be addressed. We also felt like it would help our children prepare for a better future and build our workforce through more technological opportunities and classroom opportunities. And also, it would be, it would be a magnet for new businesses looking to locate or start up in Macon County. So we appreciate your efforts in putting this referendum on the ballot, and as EDC, we encourage the general public to vote in support.
Thank you, Tom.
Thank you. Thank you.
Update from the Southwestern Commission, Executive Director Russ Harris. Welcome, Russ.
Thank you.
Good evening. Again, I'm Russ Harris, the Executive Director of the Southwestern Commission. We are the council of governments for the seven western counties, the towns within those counties, and the eastern band of Cherokee Indians. And I'm just making the rounds to our, our county commissions right now to share our annual report, which is in front of you all, a few updates from the last year, and mostly just to tell you all thank you, we're grateful for your partnership and your support. One of the ways that you all support us is, and our local governments support us, by paying dues every year. We collect $155,000 a year in dues from our member governments in the West. With those, we're able to match federal and state funding to help with our operation, but also with programs that go down to local communities. This year, so far, we're on pace with that funding to bring in over $15 million into the region, so almost $100 for every dollar we collect in dues. But it's not just about money, it's more about impact and improving the quality of life in the region. And we do that through our three departments, which are community and economic development, workforce development, and aging. Our aging department provides funding for meals for older adults, respite care for family caregivers, and host events such as auto abuse awareness walks and senior celebration, which will be held this year on September 30 in Swain County. Across the region, last year, we provided funding for over 175,000 meals and over $83,000 in respite care. In Macon County, we provided funding for over 38,000 meals for older adults. We helped to provide over 1,500 hours of caregiver respite in Macon County and provided over 2,000 transit rides for older adults. Our community and economic development department is focused on key regional issues such as broadband and housing. In the last three years, we've helped bring over $10 million into the region to improve broadband. We worked with Little T Broadband and the Macon County Broadband Committee to provide funding for two community centers in the southern part of the county and the Scam Mountain Fire and Rescue Facility. We also administer Southwestern NC Home Consortium, which we started last year, you all are a member of, and helps bring regular housing funds to the region to address our housing issues. This year, we just had the first cycle of that funding, Macon Program for Progress, where we received $43,000 to help folks, support people who are low-income, afford their rent. Our workforce development department supports local employers with funds for training, either with new staff or existing staff who need new, new skills in order to fill the skills gap. Macon County businesses who have used training funds include D and L Body Shop, Foxfire Heating and Cooling, Franklin Health and Fitness, Man Shack Insurance Agency, and Wyandotte Stair Farm and Nursery. We also support the NC Work Centers, and right now, one of the things we're doing is putting peer support specialists in the NC Work Center. These are people who are in active recovery from addiction themselves, who can be in the NC Work Center. So if somebody comes in who's looking to get back into the workforce, there's somebody there who knows what they're going through that can help them navigate that process. Right now, unemployment in Macon County is 3.3%. State, it's at state level, it's 3.4%. So we're looking at ways like that, helping people who are in recovery to expand the workforce and find people that can, we can put to work. And those are, those are our main updates. The only thing I will say is we have an upcoming board meeting on September 26th, 6th. Commissioner Bill usually attends those, everybody's invited to attend those, and on the 26th, we'll have a representative from the North Carolina Association of County Commissioners talking about the opioid settlement funds and what you can and can't do with those. So anybody's invited, you should get that invitation every time we have that meeting. It'll be at Chair's, it's not the casino, but it's the, it's the convention center, it'll be at 6:30 that night, and again, you'll get an email with that agenda and that invitation. And if you have any questions, I can try to answer those, and if I can't answer them, I'll get back to you with an answer.
With the opioid settlement, the folks need to know, Russ, that, you know, we're asking all the counties, you know, we had a meeting a few weeks back, and we're asking all the counties just to keep the powder dry, and we see exactly, you know, what the counties want to do, and it may be something more regional, over 18-year period, it's how the terms will be dispersed. With the Southwest Commission, if you're not involved and like to get involved, we'd encourage you to do so. They do a lot of great things for our region and for our county, and a lot of resources that we can pass, and we appreciate you for that.
Again, we're grateful, grateful to you all.
Thanks for watching, Russ.
Yep, thank you all.
All right, item 9B, recommendation from the Macon County Board of Elections regarding new voting equipment.
Hello, well, you're a people.
Mr. Dills, welcome.
Thank you. I'm Kathy Kinsley, and with Gary Dills, I'm the chair, the current chair of the Board of Elections here. Gary is a tireless worker as a vice chair currently. Thank you all for your service to our county. We've been undergoing a very lengthy process of reviewing the need for new voting machines. The North Carolina approves only two companies to make those machines. One is Printelect ESNS, which we currently use, and Hart Inner Civic. And so, this has been a decision that's needed, needed probably to have been made for 15 years or so. We're only one of five counties that still use the model of the machines that, that we are currently being used, and we've had that since 2005. Its technology is about 40 years old, and, and it's just not supportable anymore. So what we did, according to the State Board of Elections, we needed to do this, and we held public demonstrations of both of those operations systems on August 23rd and August 30th. They were attended by about 40 to 50 people, and we were really pleased with the turnout that we had. What we've done is gone ahead and chosen, we'd like to ask you for, to buy from Hart Inner Civic, and we chose them as our vendor, and some of the rationale is in the resolution that you have there in front of you. And Gary has, is the, he's worked really, really hard on this, and I'm going to turn it over to him to talk about many of the reasons that we went with Hart Inner, Inner Civic. And he'll go over the next steps as well, and we have staff with us, Melanie Tebow and Judy Fritz, who've also worked in calling other counties that use Hart Inner Civic as their voting system, and, and heard nothing but good reports. So I'm going to let Gary speak to some of those things.
Hopefully, the resolution kind of tells you where we stand on this. Like she said, this has been a very lengthy process by statute. We kind of have to go through a year and a half process to do this. I'm not going to read the memo to you, but some of the things that we listed were cost. This system is $14,000 cheaper than the competitor. Now, last week, if you'd asked me that, it would have been $34,000, but they came in yesterday with a new bid. I guess they figured they might do better. This voting equipment is very failing to the user. It's suitcase-like, computer-like, instead of these trashcan thing-like that you see in your, in your voting precincts. So it's, you know, it's easy for poll workers to set up. Everything's state-of-the-art, both companies. Cost of the ballots, they should decrease, I don't know, it depends on how much we do the ballot on demand. Maybe 30, 40% after we get accustomed to it. Probably won't happen the first election, but after we get into it, we can print the ballots on demand right there, white ballots. Let's see what else is on there. Some of the things that I thought personally that were beneficial from Hart as opposed to the other one, is the professionalism of the company. They sent their regional sales director to talk to us. They wanted our business. The other people sent a tech team. The Hart guy wanted to sit down with us and go through his contract, line by line, which I wanted to do anyway, and we did. We had to ask the other company to do that, which, I worked in acquisitions for a while, and you can hide anything in the contract, some of you know this kind of stuff. And I don't say the other company was trying to hide it, but it was hard to find the answers to some of the questions. So, anyway, professionalism. The one-stop-shop business. We can get, get the equipment, the coding, and the ballots from one place instead of two. And Printelect says they're one company, but they're really two companies. The Printelect people in New Bern, and the ESNS people, Nebraska, Nebraska, Ohio, Nebraska. So they're really kind of two companies. So this is a one-stop-shop kind of thing. So anyway, we just like the way the, the machines work, we think we can save money on it. Overall, we know our recurring cost will be, what I say, about $9,000, $9,000 to $14,000 less per year. That's not insignificant. So, what do we do next, after you guys approve this, hopefully approve this? We will conduct a simulated election in January. The State Board will run that with us, and basically bring in a bunch of machines, run a real simulated election. If everything works, we'll come back to you and say, okay, we're ready to go buy these things now. You'll say yes or no. If you say no, well, we have no other choices, except the other company, because these are the only two things we can do. Anyway, we'll come back to you in January, and you'll tell us what you want to do. Then we'll go to the State Board again and say, okay, we're for it, they're for it, you need to approve it. And the only reason they got to do that is in case the certification is screwed up, and they want to recertify, so they recertify, or say yes. And then we get our equipment, February, March, and then we need to take the next four or five months to train our poll workers. There are 125 people or so out there that have to learn how to use these things. So we do that, then we do the municipal election, and we're ready for 2024. Questions, comments?
Okay, what about the warranty and the service?
Warranty for Hart, that's the, that's their recurring money, $9,500. It's a warranty for all the equipment. The servicing is not necessary, it's basically, you take the little computers right out, clean it off, wipe the screen, put it back. If it's broken, put it in a box, send it, and they send you the $9,500 a year.
Was Warren Cave going to have to keep these running like he did them others for 20 years?
What we got?
Basically, money that's free, and would be about $20,000 for that a year.
Yeah. The guy we had under contract to do this, his workload will be tremendously lower. Gary Talent, Gary Talent. Yeah, that's a good question.
Do these machines connect the internet?
No, no. Nothing we do connects the internet, except after we've done a report and we connect to the state, and that's after everything's counted. It's a very, you ought to come down sometime. All of you should come down sometime and just see how we do this. It's very, I don't know, safe, secure. There's two of us involved with everything that goes on.
I'm thoroughly impressed with the recount and how.
We all got COVID on that, by the way. We all got COVID from the recount, that's what you know.
It's okay.
No, and we know, a lot of people said, hey, why are you guys doing a recount? Got lots of recount? We do a recount, that's what we're here for. So we did. And I think it was one vote, one vote different, and that's probably because of the mismatched ballot.
So is this price locked in, Gary?
Uh-huh.
From January, everything's locked in?
Once we, we've got until the 2nd or 3rd of October to tell them yes and, and put a signature on our contract, and then the price is locked. If we don't do that, the price won't be locked. $197,000 is a pretty good deal, and they gave us a hundred and something in discount, $100,000 and something in discount.
Oh, $197?
$197 and change.
Twenty-four, is it?
Twenty-four.
Is there a spare two in there?
Four. The other $14,000, Roddy talked about the 9.5, the other 4.5,000 is, what the heck is for it? Jeez, I just lost my brain. It, oh, it's, what is the 4,500 for? No licensing for those other, for those 34 machines. $110 a machine, I think it is, so.
You need any money for, for happening with the poll workers, for the training aspect of it? Because it ain't going to be a one-day deal, I'm sure.
This company will be here for three days.
Three days.
And that's included in the contract.
$14,000 bucks.
You need any money out of your budget for the poll workers?
Yeah.
Yeah, we probably have to pay them for those three days.
Three days of training, but I don't think.
That's in this budget year.
I mean, it's.
I don't think it's going to be full days because these machines are so easy to use.
Yeah, I really don't think it'll be hard. I'm, I'm as dumb as a rock, and I can figure it out, so.
But we don't do the training until we get the machines.
Well, January, January next year, yeah, which is still this budget year.
It's a year of duty.
But, you know, we don't want to get caught in the, in the presidential election year with just learning the machines. We want to use those machines in that municipal election so that the poll workers are comfortable, we're comfortable, and everything works. I mean, we don't expect to have any problems, but you got to plan on kind of, for the worst case. I'm sure you get that.
And if y'all are going to authorize them to enter into a contract, you have to appropriate the money, because there's currently $0 budgeted. You can't sign a contract without money budgeted.
Yeah, that's true.
No, it'd be fun that way.
Yeah. And we've been talking about this for several years, and Lori's been involved in those discussions, and, you know, we probably should have done this two years ago to get ahead of it, but we didn't.
What was the total amount?
$197,000.
It's going to be $200,000. But I think the motion is going to be $200,000.
Yeah.
To give a little money for the poll workers, if they find enough poll workers to do it.
Well, we're always looking for poll workers, and we asked the other, Judy asked the other counties if they had any trouble losing people, and they had not. She also asked the county, and Kathy referred to that, the other counties that have this machine, what's your experience with it? And they were all very laudatory with this equipment. One guy she talked with, I don't want to put words in her mouth, but I think this is what she told me, had been in Virginia or South Carolina somewhere, using the 200 series from the ESNS, and he said he would never go back to that again, because their heart support was much better, the equipment was much easier to use, and it was easier to train poll workers. We'd like to get some young poll workers, so, if you know, and he sent them. Other questions?
Is there an age on your poll worker when you're talking about the youth?
Well, 18, I guess.
Seventeen.
Seventeen?
Seventeen.
We go to, we go to Community College every year, she does. So it's after two or three days trying to recruit people.
We're going this Thursday.
Yes.
We'll be out there this Thursday, a bit early college.
What about our rotary, rotary interaction?
Interactions? It's worth asking. We have an end.
Declaring Election Day a holiday would really help.
Yeah.
Because it's, and then that's not you, but, but it would just free up people to take a day off, they wouldn't be at work, and they can, it's a nice little paycheck at the end of the day. It's hard work, it's long hours, but if we, if everybody knew they could be off that day and sign up to do it, it'd be helpful.
I'll make a motion that we authorize the Board of Elections, along with the County Manager, to enter into a contract to purchase these machines, with the total being taken out from, from the fund ballot in total of $200,000, and authorize them to sign the due paperwork on the first week of October. And I think it's something that's needed for a long time. I mean, it's really been needed for a long time, so I think, I can't believe that's, I think that's a wonderful price. I don't worry about booking machines.
Actually, we were surprised by the, the initial price we got from the first one was much higher, and this is the only one we got from Hart, and we were a little surprised. We figured it'd be 250 in that neighborhood.
Okay, so that is the motion.
All right, we have a motion, my Commissioner Bill, second, second, my Commissioner Shields, any further discussion?
I'm not, real quick, I also anticipated maybe through conversations, 300, 400-plus thousand. And I see other elected officials in the room, and I think election integrity is, and trust is a vital part of our democracy.
Absolutely.
I don't see these things getting any cheaper. Like I said, I did anticipate three, 400,000 or more, so we're going to spend the money regardless.
And we tend to agree with you on the integrity stuff. We work very hard, and the poll workers work very hard to ensure that.
And I wish we had a mainstream, just, just information, and maybe, you know, Brittany can help, we can kind of create a page we can share, looking for, you know, poll workers, and I don't know if people realize.
That is a need.
There's actually a compensation as well, am I right?
Yeah, it's, it's not much, but it's.
There's a lot of people in small communities that, that really care about election integrity, so I think we.
How much we pay them for an hour now, the poll workers?
We don't pay by the hour unless they're working early voting.
Pay by decision, whether it's.
About $285 on Election Day.
True, that's, that's not.
I mean, it's long hours, but, I mean, you're not volunteering, you are.
Yeah. And the, and the days are long, which is why you need young people too, because you're standing on your feet a lot. Okay, I'm sorry.
Thank you.
All in favor, since I was saying aye? Kathy, Gary, thank you.
Thank you very much, we appreciate it.
Thank you, Lori, thanks.
Oh, and thank Hazel. She's for her shirt.
That's not true of it. Seriously, we have the best board anyone can ask for.
How do you know? You know the other board?
I know our board, but I've been watching them.
Thank you all so much.
All right, update on broadband projects and grant awards. Mr. Manager, go ahead.
Yes, sir, thank you. First, I'd like to recognize some members that we have with us here tonight from the Broadband Committee. We've got Mr. Warren Cave, Mr. Joe Allen, Mr. Jeff Lee, Mr. Shields, and Russ Harris from the Southwestern Commission, who's been actively involved in the workings with the Broadband Committee. And before we get into, we're going to give you a brief update on where we're at, but I briefly want to remind you where we've been. And in 2016, this board had the foresight to go ahead and authorize the establishment of a broadband committee for Macon County. Now, at this time, we were the first broadband committee that was established in western North Carolina, and certainly broadband at that time was a big topic, and we could see it coming down the pipeline, but we went ahead and got out in front of it, and we're a trailblazer with respect to that in western North Carolina. So I'd like to commend this board for the foresight back in 2016, which has been six years ago now, for going ahead and acknowledging the importance of broadband in Macon County, and continuing to acknowledge, acknowledge that as we work through today. This committee that has been led by Mr. Shields has worked diligently over the past six years. We've conducted research, we've worked with local providers, Little T Broadband, Macon County School System, the Macon County Economic Development Commission, the North Carolina Broadband Infrastructure Office, and the Southwestern Commission, as I also mentioned. In doing this, we have worked adequately to find and pursue opportunities to address the broadband problem in Macon County, which, as Macon County residents, I feel like that each of us are very familiar with. The efforts of this committee have been time-intensive, and aside from being time-intensive, we've faced many obstacles along the way as we've pursued broadband expansion. We've faced obstacles like, number one, the FCC's method for determining what is an unserved and underserved area. Very briefly, the FCC, previously, if you have one residence in a census block that had broadband coverage, it said everybody in that census block qualified and had acceptable broadband coverage. And as we know, that's simply not the case. Along with that, we, we've had to deal with state legislation that, that largely prohibits counties from becoming involved at all in broadband. from becoming involved at all in broadband infrastructure efforts. So we, those are two obstacles that, that we had to overcome. But what I feel like is special about this committee is the way that they view these obstacles. They didn't look at these obstacles as problems, or they didn't look at these obstacles as hurdles that we couldn't overcome. They looked at these obstacles as opportunities to excel. The committee has worked with the school system, the EDC, and the Chamber of Commerce to distribute surveys among our community that allowed us to take that information and define what was actually an unserved and underserved area in Macon County. Our GIS department, working with Little T Broadband and their resources, were able to create digital inventories of these unserved and underserved areas which local providers have relied upon as part of their broadband expansion efforts. One of these efforts included bringing broadband to the Macon County Job Corps that until, until recently, a couple of years ago, I think we actually accomplished this, a year or two ago. They, you couldn't get a cell phone service out of the Job Corps, and you couldn't get reliable internet service out of the Job Corps that provides such a tremendous, uh, learning opportunity for so many and such a valuable asset to our community. From scratch, we had a county attorney at the time, our former county attorney, Chester Jones, who worked with the Broadband Committee, Little T Broadband, and the North Carolina Broadband Infrastructure Office. This was before great grants. This was before any of the grant opportunities started coming down the line. We worked locally to get this RFP in place that was in compliance with state law that allowed us to, which we will be discussing here tonight, to appropriate five hundred and eighty thousand dollars in local funding to Balsam West, who used that, leveraged that money, and turned it into a one point five million dollar fiber backbone project in South Macon, which I'm sure you've read about. And essentially what that does is it creates a fiber backbone from the Franklin city limits to the Highland city limits through Scaly Mountain, and is capable of providing direct broadband to twenty-five hundred locations, both residential and commercial. We'll go into a little bit greater detail of that here in a minute. The, the Broadband Committee continues to work hand in hand with local providers and broadband expansion efforts as great grants and federal and state funding have become available. Most recently, these efforts have contributed to Frontier Communications being awarded three point eight million in great grant funding from the state of North Carolina to expand broadband service in Macon County. Now, this great grant funding of three point eight million is going to leverage as much as twenty million more dollars in additional funds to a broadband expansion project that totals approximately twenty-four million dollars and provides broadband internet access to approximately eighteen thousand customers, residential and commercial. Crucial to this effort, as, as you will recall, was Macon County's appropriation and designation of our ARPA funding that these local providers could use and then show on their application to the state of North Carolina that Macon County had committed their local ARPA funding to assist with these projects. And that was, played a pivotal role in Frontier's ability to be able to receive this great grant. For six years, this Broadband Committee has worked to ensure that Macon County was doing everything we could do to assist local providers in expanding broadband internet service in this county. If they needed data, we got it for them. If they needed funding, we found a way to make that happen. And whenever state or funding became available, this Broadband Committee has always ensured that Macon County had a seat at the table. While the purposes of tonight's report that, that you're gonna hear, that, that brings an update to the, the projects, the South Macon Fiber Project as well as the Great Grant Project, it's, it's highly celebratory in nature. We're celebrating these victories and, and look forward to, to continue moving forward with them. But more so than anything, we're here to let you know that the Broadband Committee's gonna keep its foot on the gas. In the coming months, we're gonna be working harder than ever to assist local providers as additional grant funding from the state and federal government becomes available. We have the Critical Access to Broadband Program that, that will be coming forward. We're gonna be looking at that. And, and what's important to note here is that competition for these grants, state and federal money in the coming year is going to increase. But with the Broadband Committee that we have in place, we remain prepared. We'll continue to rely on our in-house resources, the Broadband Committee, as well as our recent formalized partnership with Little T Broadband and our ability to access their resources to make sure providers are aware of and armed with all the assistance and tools they need when pursuing these broadband opportunities in Macon County. In addition, we're gonna continue working with the state and federal government to ensure that our underserved and unserved areas are adequately defined as currently the federal government is revising their system for identifying these areas. So we're gonna be playing a key role in that as well. So with that being said, we couldn't be where we're at today without what we've done for the past six years. And the tremendous foresight by this board to establish the committee, the tremendous effort by Mr. Shields to keep this committee going and to keep us active. And with that being said, uh, we're now gonna get into the particulars of, of these two projects, namely the, the South Macon project as well as the recent Frontier Great Grant Award. So with that being said, Mr. Jeff Lee, with Little T Broadband, uh, active member of our Broadband Committee, I'll turn it over to you at this time, and he's, he's got a PowerPoint he's gonna bring up.
Let, let me say one thing about Jeff Lee. He's on board, been with us, what, a couple of years now? He's a godsend. I'm telling you, if he hadn't been with us, signed up with us in what you've done, I don't worry we'd be, we wouldn't be where we are now. Thank you, Mr. Lee.
Appreciate that, appreciate that. Got a couple of slides here that I'd like to share with you. Thank you for giving me the opportunity to share some of this information with you.
It's come a long way since we met in Jimmy Hayes' office.
Up on the mountain?
Seven, seven or eight years ago. When he first got off the ground.
All righty, let's, uh, uh, let's go into this a little bit here. Thanks again for letting me, uh, share some of this information with you. I wanted to talk first about the, uh, the South Macon Expansion Project. And, um, with the help of the investment that the Board of Commissioners approves, Balsam West has been working on a, a fiber backbone that runs from the southern edge of Franklin city limits down to, down the four forty-one to the auto area, to Brown Road. And it continues then through the Tessentee Valley, um, on Haywood AMC poles up to Scaly Mountain. And then Scaly, uh, with the help of Balsam West, completed another fiber leg that runs from, uh, the Scaly substation up there and, uh, on Mountain, Uptiller Grove, Pasture Place, to, to the city limits, the Highland. And, uh, so all of those elements are all part of the backbone. And I've got a picture here so we don't have to look at some, some bullets here. Uh, but this is, this is the route that the backbone takes. And so, uh, uh, the green leg over on the left-hand side there is the, is the leg that went down four forty-one. Part of that goes down, uh, down the road, uh, aerially on the, on Duke Power Poles and then crosses over and goes underground, uh, into the auto area. There's a connection there, uh, at the, uh, Auto Community Center and Volunteer Fire and Rescue. Uh, and, uh, Auto Community Association, uh, gave Balsam West an easement to, uh, to place, uh, equipment there on the property to help serve, uh, that area and part of the backbone. Uh, and then they connect up to the, uh, the Haywood AMC fiber that runs up through the Tessentee Valley up to Scaly Mountain. We have made, there's a connection that's made to the, uh, Scaly Community Center there at Buck Knob Road. Uh, and then another connection that's made to the Sky Valley, Scaly Mountain Volunteer Fire and Rescue, uh, right there across from the substation. So, uh, we're, we're extremely excited that, uh, the backbone is now live. They, uh, they really finished all the, uh, the last of the connections to the, the three community facilities, uh, around, uh, August nineteenth, I think, is when they finished the fiber connections. And then by the twenty-third, we have the hotspot equipment, uh, all active and running. And that hotspot equipment came from a twenty thousand dollar grant that Little T, with the help of, um, Southwestern Commission, Russ and his team, um, worked with us on. We were able to purchase, uh, commercial hotspot gear and pay for the, the equipment and the installation by a local company in Franklin, Wired Incorporated, to, uh, to do the installation at the three facilities. We had to use that money before the end of the year, so the equipment was installed and waiting for the fiber, uh, long before it got there. But, but that was, uh, that was actually great because the fire department in Scaly and at the Community Center in Scaly, they actually used the equipment even though we didn't have fiber equipment, uh, fiber tied to it yet. Uh, but with the, with that now active, um, we have, uh, public hotspots available at those three facilities. Currently, um, the way that, uh, each of the community organizations is actually controlling how, how that'll be used, but, uh, but the public wifi is available, uh, for limited hours during the day. I think they have it, uh, set for six AM to nine thirty PM, uh, at all three facilities. And then that's available in the parking lot as well as inside. And then they also have a protected wifi that's available twenty-four seven. And the, the two community organizations are working to, um, create better use for that, uh, for that service. They're, they're, uh, planning, uh, sort of rework or, uh, kind of a, uh, office hour type arrangement as they can get staffing so they can allow, uh, some of the community members to come in who do work from home, who need high-speed connections, uh, that can come to the community facilities to do that. They're also, uh, reaching out to, uh, local, um, uh, to the health department and also other, other places to try to get other programs going. But with the, with the internet access there, it enables them to do things that they couldn't do before. So it's a, it's a great community outreach, so we're very excited about that. Balsam West is, is actively working to, um, connect businesses along, uh, the four forty-one corridor. And also they're, they're just beginning to work, uh, in the Scaly Mountain and the Long Gillard Road. So if you have a business along any of those locations that are interested in service, uh, Balsam is, is working on that. Uh, and then there, uh, uh, some of our Little T members and, uh, Scaly community members are actually gonna, are taking the initiative to, to start to coordinate with the businesses in, in the Scaly and, uh, Gillard Road, uh, corridor there, um, uh, to make the connection to Balsam to, to streamline the process, so, uh, and we're gonna try to do that more along four forty-one as well.
Jim, can I add a question?
Yes, sir.
All right, I'm, I live on Buck Knob Road.
Okay.
I don't really. So who owns the, who owns the power?
So the, the fiber, uh, going down four forty-one is owned by Balsam West. And that was, uh, partially funded from, uh, the, um, grant from the county. Uh, the fiber that goes up through, from auto up through, uh, the Tessentee Valley up to Scaly and also from Scaly to the Highland city limits is owned by Haywood EMC. And, um, Balsam West worked, uh, worked on an agreement with, with Haywood EMC to utilize that fiber for the backbone. So Haywood uses that for some of their own personal, you know, their own, uh, needs for managing the power systems. And, um, part of that agreement is Balsam is assisting them connect the rest of their facilities all the way back to Haywood County.
Does some of those residents on Buck Knob Road, I, I contact Haywood?
No, that's not true. The, the fiber's being operated by, the backbone's being operated by Balsam, but the fiber, the, the asset's physically owned by, by Haywood EMC.
So if I wanna get a look to my house on Buck Knob Road, who do I contact?
Who would be Balsam West.
What was the phase on, tell us a little bit about it.
Uh, so I, I would have to defer to, um, to Balsam on that. I, I don't know what, what their fee structure. They're focusing on business, uh, connections first. Um, and I, uh, they have circulated, um, uh, a flyer for, uh, for business connection. I can, uh, make sure that, um, Derek and the Broadband Committee members have a copy of that. I can get that from Balsam. But that information, um, uh, the connections, they, they have various speed tiers that they're making available to, to businesses. Uh, the residential connections are, are something that we had planned for the next phase, that we were hoping for the next phase of, uh, of the expansion project. Balsam had an application in for the great program. They were, uh, hoping to utilize funds from that. We had an earlier application in with the NTIA, uh, last summer. Neither of those applications, uh, yield an award for Balsam, so they're having to take it, uh, one community, one development at a time in terms of residential expansion. Because they actually have to build more fiber off the backbone to feed into the residential areas.
Jeff, I think one thing to make a, a point of why we have this map up is the position that this fiber puts us in with, and as we discussed with Balsam at the time that we were moving forward this project. There's more here, there's more possibilities here than just running a line of fiber off this line directly into a home or directly into a business. There's a possibility of locating, uh, small towers along this fiber that are connected to this fiber that give them the ability through a hybrid solution, not only to, to look at this line, but then the view sheds of these towers that can be a wireless, a hybrid solution that can reach, you know, while we said twenty-seven hundred locations, that's directly by fiber. If they connect a tower to that that has a view shed of two or three hundred homes in it, that's something they could not have done before, before this fiber was in place and this backbone was.
Absolutely. When we started this, when we started this project, there really was nothing there, um, except for Frontier DSL to some people, and not even all people were served, but by the.
The Community Center in Scaly Mountain is hot now.
Absolutely.
So if your kids are going to school, uh, you know, they didn't have to go to Highlands to get.
Absolutely, and, and I actually met with, uh, Scaly Community Association last night at the, at the schoolhouse. And, uh, um, they're thrilled, absolutely thrilled. They had, there are community members there that, that do, uh, work remotely. And, uh, some of them said they had to drive into Clayton to, uh, to go to McDonald's or someplace so they could sit there and use the internet. And, uh, now they can, uh, they can go over and use Community Center or they can go over to the fire department and do that as well.
It's a start.
It's absolutely a start, so we're very excited about it.
And what kind of speed they're getting?
Uh, those are gigabit connections to the, uh, to each of those facilities. Now, an individual doesn't get that when they, when they connect via wifi just because the, the wifi signal doesn't typically carry gigabit. But, um, this is, uh, far and above any, beats anything that we've, uh, experienced with the DSL, so. So it's, uh, it's tremendous and for somebody who's actually working remotely, having fast connectivity is important. So that's where we are on that, that part of the project. Any other questions on the, on the backbone?
On the, uh, up to the Scaly, uh, some of that's aerial, uh, we might reuse Haywood.
Uh, yes, sir. Um, there, there are sections of the, of the four forty-one portion of the backbone that are aerial that are actually on Duke poles, uh, that goes from Franklin down to, uh, uh, Coweta Church Road. And then it hops over the other side of, uh, Georgia Road and, and is buried, uh, from there to Brown Road. Uh, and also up, uh, Firehouse Road to the Auto Community Center. And the last thing that's happening with the, with the, with auto, um, volunteer fire and the, uh, Scaly volunteer fire and rescue, um, we are working to expand the wifi coverage for the, um, the two fire facilities. Uh, we're expanding, and now that we have the service available, we're expanding into the, uh, into the, um, fire department offices in auto, and then we're actually expanding the coverage within the building in the Scaly facility, and Little T's covering that. We're, uh, we're expanding the wifi with, working with Wired on that. All righty, moving on to.
I've got a, I've got a question.
Yes, sir.
Derek, uh, raised a point about the, uh, possibility of putting these, these, uh, small towers in place to service a number of residences. Is there any idea what the timeline is for grant approval, moving on to potential tower, uh, projection?
It, it really, it really depends on the grant program, but like the state grant programs we're working with that we're gonna talk about in a minute, um, the, uh, the application window is usually many months. The approval process takes several months. And then, uh, uh, once the approvals are done and, and agreements are signed for the, for the grant funding, construction can start as soon as the, uh, the provider can get materials and, uh, and labor to actually start to work. And sometimes there's, there's lead times associated with that as well. And sometimes there's lead times associated with that as well. So usually these programs, especially the big grant programs, we were usually looking at six to nine months minimum to get to where they can start deployment of the grant funds.
So you're talking about sometime in '23, where we'll see some of this activity that you mentioned?
Yes, sir. Later this year as well.
How will that be prioritized? I mean, is there any? I know that's, that's a broad question for broadband, but how, how do they prioritize the communities based on number of people or what?
It's, as far as the, the grant programs that are coming, we're going to talk about the Great Grant here in a minute. So that's something we're still learning how the, what the priorities are going to be for Macon and how it'll be deployed. So the, remind everyone of the, excuse me, the North Carolina Great Grant. Great Grant is a program that the state of North Carolina put together a couple of years ago. I think they started in 2019 was the first year they started the, the Great Program. For the 2020, 2022 year, they received funds from the ARPA, American Rescue Plan Act through the federal government, and so they allocated 350 million statewide. The, one of the action items that the, in North Carolina Department of Information and Technology had was that grants be provided to all eligible counties if, if sufficient funds were available. And so this, with this last round, they've issued grants to almost all counties. Frontier was awarded the, the grant for Macon County. And what I'm going to show you here in a minute, a little bit about why Frontier won. Frontier actually outbid the other providers in our county. And although we, we all look at this with, you know, we're hesitant on how we want to move forward, we're trying to keep, stay focused on how we're going to execute here and work with Frontier and get this deployed for the county because I think it is an excellent opportunity for the county, and I'd like to share with you some of the details of that. The project proposes to serve 2,700 residences and businesses just as part of the application. But what Frontier shared with us previously is that in order to serve these locations, they have to build a lot more infrastructure than was actually put into the grant application itself. They actually have to build infrastructure throughout the county. And so their actual intent is to serve most all the residents that they already serve with DSL. They know full well that they have to invest in the county to maintain, you know, subscribers on their network, and so this is an excellent opportunity for them to, to move forward and do that and bring some relief to the county. So we're, we're looking to hold an initial meeting with them in the next week or two. We're trying to get that scheduled right now. So we, we need to learn a lot more about their plans, their exact timeline and their priorities, as was asked earlier, you know, where will they start first and how will that work? I wanted to show a...
Well, the next closest bid, Jeff.
So let me show this next slide because I'm able to help explain that just a little bit better.
We all get nervous in Frontier. We try to hold just...
Well, I'll tell you, when I, when I talked to the folks at Scaly last night and I said Frontier won the award, I had to, I had to overcome the groans in the room, you know, so I could proceed.
That's just gentlemen right here. The question was in Mount of Haley when we were all back.
So, so I fully understand, and I am a Frontier customer reluctantly because I have a half megabit at my house, which makes working on broadband projects quite challenging at times. So it's a, it is tough. But what I wanted to show you here on this map, this is, once again, the map of Macon County, and what we're illustrating here is we're illustrating all the locations that were eligible for Macon, for Frontier to serve in Macon County. These were, the red dots that are shown in this map are the 2,700 locations that were eligible for grant funding. And when I say eligible, I have to remind everybody that all of the areas in Macon County that are shaded in tan are areas that are covered by the FCC ARDOF program. The ARDOF bids were won by Charter Communications, and Charter at some point will move into and start, begin building in Macon County, but we don't anticipate they will be here till at least 2025. They're very busy. They have to build west from Haywood County through Jackson to get to us. So in the meantime, we're trying to do what we can to create some relief, help providers create some relief in the, in the nearer term. The little areas marked in green are, were the only areas that were truly eligible for Frontier to bid on or for any of the applicants to bid on. Frontier created an application that essentially they said they would serve the entire county, all eligible applicants in the entire county. The other applicants in the county carved out small pockets that they wished, that they could serve. And Frontier was able, with the size of their application, to come in at half the cost per, per location as many of the other grant applicants. So this just gives you a better idea of where those eligible locations were. Now, these, these locations are scattered throughout the county. A lot of them are clustered in the center, but there are many that are scattered pretty far out. And in order for them to actually serve those in the two-year window that they're allowed, they have to build infrastructure to get there. And they fully intend to serve all the rest of the residents along the way as they build that infrastructure. So as Derek said earlier, they're going to have to invest another 20 million in the county to build out the infrastructure. So when you add that to the, to the grant funding, that's a pretty nice investment for the county. Any questions?
And this is not, this is all fiber, right, Jeff?
They, this is all fiber. This is a fiber-to-the-home solution.
No DSL lines?
No DSL. This is all fiber. In fact, it's almost impossible to get grant funding for anything but fiber anymore. Most of the federal funds, the way they've worded the, the federal funds, it's hard to get any grant funding for anything but fiber. Questions?
I think also Frontier will have to do some reworking. I'm trying to think how to say this in a positive way. I think Frontier is going to make an effort to make, make sure that they're quality work and that the, the history is history.
Absolutely. I, I know that they have, they know they have a reputation to overcome, and one of our action items is broadband committee is to begin engaging with them, the county actually has to sign an agreement of partnership with Frontier. And as part of the terms of that agreement of partnership, we certainly want to make sure that we do everything in our power to, to hold them accountable and to, to try to work past the, the reputation, to try to actually make this a workable solution for us.
Are you asking a question on anything related to?
Absolutely, sure.
I live in a rural area outside England. I've got, I think I've got four dishes in my yard. I dig them up, but I forget which one worked or what, but they don't kill a lion. The big fan right now is the Starlink.
Yes, sir.
Two business assets.
Starlink is still a very early service here in, in fact, the entire southeast and eastern seaboard, getting Starlink service is waitlisted. So even if you have an order for a terminal, which I do, have one for a year and a half...
I may have made that before.
Well, you can, you can get either the RV service or the, or the best effort, which they're starting to offer, but you're prioritized behind other, other users who do have subscription. You have to have a clear sky view. If you don't have a clear sky view, then you get dropouts in your service every so many minutes.
Trees.
Trees. And so if you live in a field, you're in, you're in great shape. If you don't live in a field and you live on the side of a mountain with trees around you, then it's going to be difficult. So it's not going to be a solution for everybody. I think it will be a solution for some folks, and it remains to be seen how quickly they're able to meet the demand.
I waited for over a year, a year, four months for the residential.
I'm still waiting too, so I share your opinion.
And we decided to try the RV, got one week. Applied to the RV, got it one week. Took it out, it's a little box, dropped it in the garden, you know, went for the spot, the obstruction. Set the receiver in the garden, plugged the modem in the house, in five minutes, 100 meg download.
That's excellent. That's excellent.
I paid up to 150. Oh, I don't need two. That's about what I've been, two H's what I've been getting to the LISA. And I've tried everything in the world. You get a contract for this, you get tired of it, you box it up, laid it in, if you don't need to go over cancel service per month, go online, cancel service, it's $135 a month for residential. Now I found out you can do the business model, but they're touting 300 meg download. So, and then I know a bunch of people that's on board, three right in my meeting, they have the rage to describe me. It's been, we've been doing this since 2016 and, and I appreciate what the broadband, you know, what's happening.
Understood.
I understand the process and how slow the process is, is.
Yes, sir.
I personally don't need broadband. I want a cell phone that I can call on in the middle of Franklin and not get dropped. But the thing with the Starlink, in two years, they're saying they're going to take the cell phone industry.
Correct.
So is it satellite or is it cable or, or fiber? Is that a, I mean?
So, well, we could, this could be a very long discussion, so I'm not sure if we want to, but I'd be happy to have that discussion with you. But I think Starlink is going to be a solution for some folks. It, it won't be a good solution for everyone, especially, it depends on your location. There are other issues with Starlink that you have to, have to be aware of over time. So, so once again, I think it's, it's, you know, when I, when I talk to the different communities, we're certainly telling them, we do have a conversation about Starlink, and I've got a, a slide for that. So I'd be happy to share some more of that information with you if you'd like that.
Who owns Starlink? Elon Musk?
SpaceX. It's a...
Elon.
Yes, yes. And I actually worked for a company that, that was going to develop some technology for them. So, so yeah, it's, it's a, it's a very impressive operation that they have, but they still do have a long way to go to make it readily available for everybody.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jeff, for all the work.
Thank you, Jeff. And everybody in that committee. You got that with you? It's nice to be on the floor. Steve, go over here. Yeah? All right. Mr. Chairman, can I say thank you to the two media sources for what they do?
Sure.
For keeping us up, the information that you do, because I know you're having to do a lot of research information that just not, doesn't come out from our meetings. I just want to say thank you for what you do. It keeps the community informed. We were in a meeting the other night, and that was the first thing you wanted to talk about. I just pulled out the paper so we can read it there. Thank you both.
Thank you. We're going to move on to all business. Item 10A has been removed. Item 10B, update on request qualifications for Highland School additions.
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman. Following the direction of this board, we released the ad for soliciting requests for qualifications for the Highland School addition project. We did receive two responses, one from LS3P, one from SGA Narmore Wright to this RFQ. What we, the next step in the process, we have sent these on to Dr. Baldwin, our finance office has, and we have been in discussions with Dr. Baldwin about selecting a committee. As you'll recall, following the RFQ, a committee is established, which goes through and ranks each of the responses based on the qualifications, and the highest qualified firm is then selected by the committee and recommended back to the board for contract negotiations. So at this point, where we're at is, we received these RFQs. Dr. Baldwin has recommended the, the group to evaluate them as follows. Tracy Talent, Todd Gibbs, Chris Baldwin, Carol Arnold, Hillary Wilkes, Jack Morgan, Josh Young, Gary Shields, and Jeff Weller, one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, and nine. So these nine individuals will evaluate these responses. This is pretty much the liaison committee that looks over and evaluates these responses. And once they do, in October, I can bring back the recommendation of this committee as to which one they will be proposing. And then if the board so chooses at that time, following the October meeting, if the board would like me to begin contract negotiations once the committee reports back, then I can do that. So that is where we're at in the process, and just wanted to bring the board up to date on that.
When do we have a discussion? I mean, does this fit, this kind of, this is only sure about, or does this fit into the education capital improvement plan? I mean, we've been talking about high schools, finished up on a project over here.
The, well, where this fits in is this board, this board authorized or instructed us to release the RFQ for the Highland School addition. And so we did, and that's, now we're, we're here where we are now. And so moving forward, you know, it's certainly up to the board how this will proceed, but as far as that goes, following the direction that was given to this, to us by this board, I think it was in July or August, we released that RFQ, and the next step in the process will be to, for this committee to evaluate it and bring back their evaluations. I know that...
Public hearing setup. I mean, will there be a public hearing or?
No, not, not for this. They're...
Not for choosing the architect, but the project itself. This is not going to be achieved. Project unit.
If we, if we had to borrow some money for it, where do we look at the hearing involving that?
So the plan is?
So there's no money budget for this project?
And see, right now with an RFQ, you know, until, until an architect is selected and you can begin talking to that architect, we don't have any idea of what a firm number would be. I mean, we did have an architect bring us back, I think it was around 8 million to do this project, but again, that's based on a lot of conceptual, you know, they're not detailed site plans that they're basing these on for the, for that number. So, you know, a good number's really not going to come until we can begin negotiations with that architect, which...
They need some money.
...will become later on in the, in the process.
So once we choose the architect, then he, then execute a contract with them?
Once we choose the architect, we will have to, when we, before we execute a contract with them, their contract's going to be based on what they believe is going to be the cost of that project, and it's going to be a percentage of that. And so at that point, we'll, you know, you can get a better idea of what the architect's thinking that project's going to cost.
I guess we choose an architect, does that mean this is a government?
If you choose an architect, that means that the next step would be, if this committee selects and says, "We recommend LS3P," or "We recommend SGA Narmore Wright," then in October, I'll come back to this board and say, "We've heard from the committee, they're going to recommend LS3P. Would the board like me to enter into contract negotiations with LS3P, or would the board like me to enter into negotiations with SGA Narmore Wright if that is the firm they select?" So as we then, after leaving and, and beginning those negotiations, things are going to start becoming a little bit more clear, like what they anticipate the total cost of the project to be, what percentage of that total cost is going to be their fee. That's areas we usually negotiate. What percentage of that's going to be reimbursable? We'll get all that ironed out, and Lori will beat them down, but, and then we'll bring you back a, we'll bring you back a negotiated contract for consideration at the next meeting.
And then what can this... And then, we can discuss.
And then, you can discuss, you'll have a better idea of what the project costs are, better idea of things like timelines, better idea of what the architect's thinking. And at that time, before we vote to enter into a contract, is when a lot of those questions will become more clear than they are now. They're still not going to be able to give you a real firm number, but you'll be close.
Okay. Look, I was K, state, state funds, what, K through 12? Is there state funding for pre-K? Is there state funding for pre-K?
I don't think so.
No, there is, there is. Is there, is there, but is then the, did the state release the pre-K monies, or is it just K-12?
I'm almost, no, I'm almost 100% sure, so.
See, those are the things we need to iron out, I mean, we're going to have two seasons for.
Running this budget.
I can't remember, but if you'll step back in your head a little bit, you'll remember when my wife was here.
Pretty empty, huh?
Richard Delaney was here, Jeff Weller was here, and AHEC, the Advanced Highlands Education Committee, had paid forty thousand dollars to have a study done, and the, the goal of that study was to provide pre-K for the town of Highlands. It's offered in numerous locations in Franklin, but it's not offered to Highlands. So, they were looking at how, how does this happen? So, you know, it obviously comes back to the county, they'll support that as they have done for Franklin.
We need to, we need to know that.
And then it comes, and all that information, I'm sure, will be presented again, if we need to go back there, because I honestly can't remember either. It's been, I think that was March when they were here, roughly March when they were here, but.
So, Derek, only thing you're asking for tonight is?
But I am pretty sure that state pays for.
Permission.
Based upon.
Yeah, just permission to move forward and the board to acknowledge the.
And turn it back to the committee.
The committee and go through, proceed through the next step.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we authorize the county manager and the finance director to proceed with the next step with the committee that, that he has discussed.
Motion. Motion by Commissioner Bill, second by Commissioner Shields. Any further discussion?
Do we need a motion? Do we need action?
I, I think to move forward, to go and go through the process, RFQs.
I guess we're approving that committee. I don't know if that needs a motion as much as it does a nod ahead, so.
And we've already, y'all authorized us to do the RFQ. This is just.
This.
Basically, Derek was just giving you an update of here we are today.
You don't need a motion.
The committee will evaluate, we'll come back in October with the recommendations.
I just want to make sure that committee has the.
Y'all want to bless the committee.
Yeah.
I have consensus.
Take the blessing and move on.
You listen?
Yeah.
You listen?
Bless him himself.
All right.
So, the motion's standing, Mr. Chairman.
Yeah, I don't think we need a motion, so.
Just nod ahead is what we decide on here.
Move forward.
All right, move forward.
Okay.
Thank you.
Somebody need a break before we move on to new business? Keep trucking. All right. New business, parking lot and garage apron resurfacing replacement, Franklin and Highlands emergency medical services base. Welcome, Mr. Kay, emergency services director.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Most of you will remember that for years, North Carolina DOT would work with their local emergency service agencies in their counties, and they would either resurface or repave the, some parking areas, in particular, the aprons that go in your garage bays. They no longer do that. What they do now is they have a grant program whereby, when we request that, they will actually put you in a grant cycle and award money for that. Macon County has been awarded a total of fifty thousand dollars, twenty-five thousand dollars for resurfacing a, or replacing a parking area at the MS base in Franklin on Height Road, and twenty-five thousand dollars to resurface or replace the apron going into the garage base in Highlands. Two separate projects, but tonight I need the approval from you all to accept those funds, and Lori's probably about three steps ahead of me. At some point, we'll actually need a budget amendment to appropriate those funds into the line item where we can actually spend those funds and do those resurfacing projects.
So, move, Chairman. Got a motion, my Commissioner Young?
Say.
Second by Commissioner Higginson in favor?
Aye.
Lori?
Just to clarify, that was to accept the funds and approve a budget amendment appropriating the funds for fifty thousand. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Lori.
I wish next time you'd make it quicker.
Consideration of resolution to the North Carolina Legislature to amend the statutory requirements necessary for registration as an environmental health specialist or environmental health specialist intern. Commissioner Higgin and Mr. Ruttner, county attorney.
Thank you. So, this was what we've been talking about with regard to the problem and the shortage of the environmental health specialist field for water, water, wastewater and well permitting. We put together a resolution, the legislature called for, we're thinking we had until November, but Derek just recently got a thing from Kevin Leonard with the North Carolina.
Yeah, to, we were talking about submitting this to the legislature. I just thought it makes sense, you know, there is a process through the North Carolina Association of County Commissioners called Legislative Goals Process, which Commissioner Bill is very familiar with. The submission of these legislative goals ends in September. At the end of September, you got to have legislative goals submitted, or they, I think it was the 26th, but they mentioned.
Do they extend?
Yeah, I think so. So.
They will extend it now?
With that being said, I think it makes sense to submit this to the North Carolina Association of County Commissioners as part of their legislative goal process. And in doing that, that's just going to give that a little bit more, it's going to give it a little bit more steam going into the legislature, especially if the Association of County Commissioners takes that up as a legislative goal. So, with that being said, I think it makes sense to, to go ahead and approve this resolution tonight and submit it on to the NCACC.
Okay, so then, there is a statutory requirement of what is currently required for, to obtain the environmental health specialist certification. And right now, it requires thirty hours, thirty semester hours worth equivalent in the physical or biological sciences of an accredited four-year university. Well, what the Health Department came, then recommended was, was a deviation from that that would reduce the hours from thirty to fifteen. And then, one thing that, that Commissioner Higgin suggested was, you know, does it really need to be a four-year degree? So, these qualifications here in this resolution that, that is proposed are up for your all's debate and decision as to how you want to, what you recommend. Obviously, you don't have the legislative authority to change the statute, but it's the recommendation that you're making. And so, we came up with reducing it to the thirty to the fifteen, but then there was also removing the requirement of two or more years of experience in the field. We also, right now have it that instead of a four-year degree, that it'd be an accredited, accredited a two-year degree from a community college or junior college, that it is accredited, accredited by the Accrediting Commission for Community and Junior Colleges. And that's just another, we've also got the associate's degree from a trade school that is accredited by the Accrediting Council for Continuing Education and Training. So, those are different accrediting entities based upon whether it is a community college or a vocational trade school. These are just suggestions, and you all can, can modify those however you want.
I think they're good. I think I was in the environment, I was fifty years ago, had the same requirements, thirty years of approved science, four-year degree, blah, blah, blah. And we've done everything we can for the last couple of years to try to hire people who work in environmental health. We've got some salaries, which is very competitive, benefit package, very competitive, and we've had applicants, qualified applicants come in, and we had fifteen, twenty hours of approved science. We go to the college, get you another fifteen hours, nobody's going to be bad. And it's just, it's, it's, it's a, it's a archaic requirement, it's been around for over forty years, and we're just simply saying, hey, please look at this and see if we can bring it up today. I mean, and I think getting that, I didn't realize, Ronnie told us, we were Environmental Health Association, but.
Well, when I, Derek and I were there at the conference, and obviously, we did ask and go ahead and put on the agenda to have this discussion, eighty-four counties were present in the room.
It's a problem, certainly in the, well, it's a problem.
It's a problem, especially in rural counties. Now, what they're doing in the metropolitan counties, of course, you got to know that eighty-five percent of them is on municipal system.
Yeah.
But in rural counties, any county that, that has anything going on, what it is, they've lost the people. And, and this is one of the reasons. I mean, the only person that has to have a higher degree than what's listed here is this gentleman right here. That's the only one in the county. So, to have that kind of degree, and I'm a contractor, so if I send it out to Paul Higgin, you know, as long as I oversee it, I mean, it's totally legal. But so, this is, I think it's fine. I would ask that, with Paul's permission and the attorney's permission, that we include in here, you know, I mean, this is our resolution, but to distribute this resolution to all counties before we, and then, you know, we'll, we want to be inclusive, let this be a pattern for them, and their boards can pass this. I'm sure that out of the eighty rural counties, most of them will pass a resolution, they might change the wording some, but in the meantime, we'll go ahead and forward this to our attorney at the association, and let her review it and make sure everything's good to go, and get it on the agenda. But I think with the permission, if this, if this passes this board, permission to, we'll send it out, well, ask the county major, send it to all hundred counties, and for their, for their review, and because they all have, especially those eighty rural counties, they're the same vote.
Yeah. We're thirty-four months behind on applications for septic systems or wells, and that's a link to our economy. So, whatever we can do, thank you, Mr. Counsel, for asking that.
That's very good.
Is there any reason we don't do this through the association and send it on anyway?
Yeah, we'll, we'll do it.
We'll do both.
I mean, we'll do all, we'll do all three. We'll see, county's in, legislature's in, association's in, let's let it go. And he'll pass, let's let it go.
Okay. As you said, should we have forwarded, let Kevin or whoever had delivered the.
Send it to one.
I think we do both, yeah.
And there's a rulemaking committee down there, I don't even know who's on that, that's the way they're working down there, I don't know, but we need to get, there's somebody we need to get to.
You need to, these folks, they'll work.
All right. What do you think, Mr. Higgin?
Just adoption?
Yeah.
Make a motion.
Motion to approve, Mr. Chairman.
Got a motion to approve the resolution, Mike.
Second.
Commissioner Higginson, second by Commissioner Young, all in favor?
Aye.
All right. Consideration of easement for Duke Energy for Buck Creek Road and Pre-Mer Project, Mr. Manager.
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman, and glad to have Ms. Lemon with us here tonight. Good to see you.
Good to be here.
Very quickly, this is located at 11099 and 11015 Buck Creek Road, that is right. Currently, this line, this transmission line runs on the opposite side of where the Zachary Park is located there. There's already a telephone line that is running in the easement on the side of Zachary Park. What Duke is going to be doing is relocating one pole to come on to the Zachary Park side of the road within that same area that the telephone line is located in order to straighten out their line. I've had Jack Morgan meet on site with Duke Energy. He says there's no adverse impact to the county, as there is already something there, and we'll never use that piece of the property anyway. I've had the county attorney review the easement, prepared by Duke Energy, everything's a go. All we need is approval of this board.
All right. Go ahead. Now, we got a motion by Commissioner Young, second by Commissioner Higgin, I do have a question or something that I'm just not comfortable with. Mr. Attorney, on item, you got it in front of you?
Yeah.
Yeah, item number four on the, the rights guaranteed herein.
I'm sorry, I'm back on the other one. Did have it.
Send to the easement.
I want it.
I'll read it to you. It says, granted, you'll have the right to install necessary guy wires and anchors extending beyond the boundaries of the easement area. The reason I've got a hiccup with that is that the future intent of this property is for it to be recreational. You can see in the picture you have on there, the soccer field and baseball field right past it. I just want to ensure that we've got no guy wires, hopefully, can we remove that one sentence from there? I don't want any guy wires, I don't want a kid getting, as he runs in. At least I'm not saying that y'all will, I don't even know what size wires, but I don't want it to be hung in there for the future either, that some type of guy wire might extend out past the easement area along the side of the road there to hold it.
Sure, we can, the other thing we can do is, is protect it, make it visible to.
Sure.
How wide is the easement?
So, generally about forty foot easement?
Forty foot?
Says forty foot, yeah.
So, twenty feet on the other side of the center?
But nothing, Lisa, nothing's inside the fence, right?
No, no.
No, this is at the location where the old trailer, he just said. I just don't want a guy wire blocking back and inhibiting our use of some of that space outside of that twenty-foot area off the side of the road, thirty-foot area off the side of the road. Is that an issue? Anybody?
Could you change the language?
Y'all got a question about it? Y'all may be seeing it different than I am, so.
Do you have to come back to the board?
Not according to this.
I mean, but you want to change that to that?
We can, you can authorize Derek to sign on behalf of the county with that change, and then we can have Lisa just take out four.
Yeah.
And that way, you don't, you don't have to bring it back to the board.
Sure that it meets it.
Yeah.
They'll authorize me with that.
I'm good, I just didn't like that whole thing, because it could, and it doesn't say how far it could, it says outside of the area.
And your space is small there and utilized, so.
Correct.
Fair assessment on your part.
Okay. Everybody good with that? You getting the motion?
Okay.
Change? All in favor?
All right.
Thank you.
It's good to be here.
Thanks, Lisa.
If I could just add to that, the other part of that that's significant is it's another three face feet into the hospital that helps with the resiliency there and reliability, so it's an important project.
Good.
Thank you.
Thank you, yeah. Grand agreement for Dogwood Health Trust and Macon County Housing Department, housing director John Pae. Welcome, John.
Thank you, it's good to be here again. We, just to give you just a little bit of background, there's a lot of money out there that can be grabbed onto here, and we try to keep our eye focused on that, especially when it comes to housing for, and housing assistance for the folks in Macon County. So, basically, the county has really been ahead of the ball here again throughout time on doing studies for housing, affordable housing needs. And basically, the folks at Dogwood Health Trust have done a most recent study, unfortunately, this study that they did was for the entire state, and while it did have a section in there for Macon County, the data that's there is kind of sketchy at best. So, with, with the assistance of our county manager and the assistance from Nantahela Health Foundation, Lori Ann Bailey, who's the executive director, and Lisa Duff, who's the associate director, we formulated a grant request for a planning grant. The interesting thing about that is, is that the Dogwood Health Trust was not keen on doing planning grants. They were looking for shovel-ready programs where they could build apartments or housing developments and such as that. And one of the things that we felt was, is that we really need to understand what's going on in Macon County, especially since the pandemic. A lot of the data that was used before is irrelevant now. Basically, things have changed so dramatically. So, we knew that in order to get a grasp on what was happening in Macon County as far as affordable housing goes, it would be really helpful if we could get a good, strong look at it. So, we worked the grant for a hundred and ten thousand, we were approved, it's a hundred thousand over a two-year period. It'll go through August, the first of 2024. And what the intention is at this point is to put together some folks in the community to basically look at the issue of affordable housing in Macon County, more specifically in a comprehensive manner. A lot of projects in the past have been targeted towards just low-income people, basically separating people and keeping them apart from everybody. And the Dogwood Health Fund, or Health Trust, is really interested in a comprehensive appro- And the Dogwood Health Fund, or Health Trust, is really interested in a comprehensive approach of having people of all different calibers, if you will, people, young people, old people, people with needs, whether it be a disability, mental issues, veterans, those things. While we can't, we know going into this, we can't be everything to everybody, and we can't solve all the problems, but we can't solve any of them unless we know which ones are the most pressing issues for Macon County. And that's what we hope to determine with this housing study. The county's has no portion in this, this is all grant funds. The only thing that we put into it, basically, is my time. We charge for, we'll be charged, that's our match. So, the time, time that I'm putting in already will basically suffice for our portion of that.
What do you timeline, John?
It starts, as soon as you all vote on it here, if you vote to accept, then I'm gonna get together with Nantahala, folks at Nantahala Trust, and we're gonna sit down and.
They just happen to be in the room.
Okay.
Hi, John.
Well, hello, yeah. People I see you for, thank you. So, basically, yes, we'll be getting together with them, Making Program for Progress will be involved, seeing that they are the HUD Housing Authority, Designated Housing Authority for Macon County. So, that increases our funding abilities if we do come up with a project. And I guess, and certainly the intention is, is that we'll keep the county manager informed and anybody else that is interested.
Can you come to the mental health task force in the morning, ten o'clock?
Sure, sure, be glad to.
Carpenter Building?
Sure.
I think the folks would be interested in hearing. Those folks around that table, they know more about the housing thing than probably anybody. So, you could come and give them that report, ask for some data, what they see and know.
That's right, it'll help a bunch. That's, those are the kind of groups that we want to get in touch with and establish lines of communication.
We try to be done by twelve, we usually get them at two.
Do you feed? Do you feed?
If you come on, we'd love to.
The other thing I wanted to bring up is, is real quickly here, there was talk earlier on about the fair, and this year, the housing department's gonna have a booth at the fair, it'll be me. And we also were fortunate enough with ARPA COVID-related funds, which was for the weatherization program. We got, were able to get a, believe it or not, well, some people call it the Barbie House, but it's about a thirty-two inch by about sixty-inch, two-story house built with plexiglass walls, and it has partitions in it, has all kinds of electronics in it, so that we can demonstrate to people how the weatherization program works, how it can save them energy. It has all different kinds of situations, we can show them what the dangers are with their carbon monoxide, if they happen to use fossil fuel-type heating systems. So, it's a very informative thing. And the other, the last thing is, we do have an article coming out in the Franklin Press, The Highlander, and the Macon County News and Shopping Guide, that basically mentions this house. Feel free to come by anytime, the housing department, we have it there, and we've used it several times for demonstrations there. We told the people at State, and our intention is to use this training aid regionally. So, it's available for any of the other weatherization agencies west of Asheville. So, that's, we're trying to, trying to bring training here to this area. That's all I got.
Do we need a motion to receive the grant?
Lori, you can.
Yeah. Motion by Commissioner Bell?
Sorry.
Second by Commissioner Shills, all in favor?
Thank you.
Thank you, John.
Thank you.
See you in the morning.
Okay, ten o'clock.
All right. Item eleven E was removed, item eleven F, memorandum of understanding with the town of Franklin concerning acquisition of property and extension of the Little Tennessee Greenway, Mr. All.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Pleased to have Alderman Culpepper, Alderman Guthrie, and town manager, Ms. Amy Owenswood's here, not from the town of Franklin. This item, Mr. Chairman, the town of Franklin has currently agreed upon the terms of the purchase and are currently drafting a purchase agreement for a fourteen-acre tract of property that was owned by Main Spring, formerly known as the Dills' property, that is below Southwestern Community College. Upon acquisition of this property, it would enable the county, and as you will recall, we've looked at this property before, it would enable us to essentially connect the greenway to the Macon County Red Park. Now, the town has proposed an MOU here, I've had our attorney review it, he sees no signs of, of any red flags as far as our approval of it goes. What the brass tacks of this MOU is, in exchange for the town purchasing this property, essentially the county is just going to cooperate with the town as they pursue funding sources, sign on as a joint applicant for funding sources if necessary to get the path constructed through this portion of the property. The county had, the town is going to purchase the property, the town is going to construct the greenway. After the, the greenway is constructed per the MOU, the county would agree to be responsible for the maintenance upkeep and security of the extended greenway, which we're already in the business of doing. So, basically, they're gonna acquire the property, they're gonna construct the trail for the, in, in exchange for the county's obligation to cooperate with them through this process and maintain and upkeep the greenway once this project is complete. As I've said, we discussed this project before, and, and right now, as it's presented right now, it offers the county a much better deal than, than we had when discussing it before.
Now, Amy, you are a wire of the easements that go through that property. The town has easements, and the county has easements. We negotiated with the Dills' family to put the sewer line through that.
Yes, sir, and that's part of why we were looking at the property anyway, is that we needed that access to the sewer line, because the only way currently that we can get in to do any maintenance is to come down a hundred-foot drop from the Indigo Apartments. And when you're on a backhoe, that's probably not the best thing to do, so it's not safe. So, in order for us to actually be able to access, and I don't, do they have a copy of the map?
No, they don't. Can I get your PDF?
Not a problem. Sorry to show you on the map. Up here is where that hundred-foot drop is, and about six hundred feet is the crow flies. Of course, the sewer line comes around, we can't come across down here because it's a wet one, so we can't bring all the equipment across, as the state can be all the bonus with that. So, we do have the right-of-way coming out of Almond Drive, it was one that was not open previously. So, we do have that access, and it actually runs adjacent here to the property line of the property that Main Spring and the town are looking at purchasing. So, that, of course, would give us the access we need to do any repairs to that sewer line. Your greenway starts right here, and we could just bring it on around and connect those two properties.
Yeah, there's some private property, private owner between the Dills' property and the Red Park.
Oh, it picks up that eas, get into that easement she talks about right there. There's an existing easement that would enable them to continue.
Yeah, okay.
Well, we don't have to actually even go that way, because we will have that right-of-way there, and it would connect. So, we wouldn't even have to go through there, it would automatically connect to Almond Drive, where we already have that.
And the actual walking trail, it will be of this easement?
It will come through where we already have our right-of-way, we would allow that to connect to Almond Drive.
That's paved road, right?
Yes, partially paved, right.
So, if you want to use the walking, if you want to walk the greenway and go to the Red Park, you're walking down this paved, paved road.
And what we had considered at one point is actually putting bollards here, because there's vehicular traffic coming up to it, where the pavement ends, but then if we put some bollards, ones that we could take out if we needed the access to get to the sewer line, we would have that ability, but it would still be safer for pedestrians who were utilizing the greenway.
What about a sidewalk?
At this point, it's, it's not set up for a sidewalk, because the sidewalk, actually, if you come down Almond Drive, you would hit the sidewalk. So, there wouldn't be one on that short part of Almond Drive.
Have you had problems with that sewer line?
Not at this point.
Have you been in problems with that sewer line?
At this point, thanks for going, don't jinx me, I've had enough problems. Do not jinx me.
Better negotiators than we are.
Do not jinx me.
I mean, get that right-of-way here.
Yeah.
I remember it well.
So, but yeah, and it's, it's an opportunity for the county and the town to work together on projects into the future that were already planned. You already had the greenway extension in your future planning, just gives us all an opportunity to work together to look at some more potential for recreational activities and to do things together, because unfortunately, there've been some times where we haven't all been on the same page. So, we want to work to make that happen, so.
The remaining property in the house place?
At this point, we don't have any plans for that at this point, so that's something that we can look at for the future for recreation, to potentially look at some funding together under a part-of-grant or something like that, if we needed to expand the recreational opportunities in that area.
I guess I've been out of the loop, I didn't know this was in the workings, but that's really exciting, glad to see that. Thanks for remembering the night, and I'm excited to get to work together.
We'll get this, I'll make a motion, we approve the memorandum of understanding.
I have a motion by Commissioner Bell, a second by Commissioner Shills. I've, I've got to ask, because this, this has been going on forever with the county. I mean, the last, our, we had, we had, we were looking at three hundred thousand dollars to do this, and the town's gonna pony that up?
No, sir.
There's something, I smell a fish here, there's something, there's something not right.
Well, I don't, I don't know what any previous offers were from Main Spring, but we have been offered twenty-two thousand for the property, and our council has accepted.
Better negotiator than we are. Main Spring was looking for money out of us.
We're better than you on the go, working with us.
So.
Yeah. Yeah. Now, Amy, can you give us the, I'm sorry, Timmy, go ahead.
Something disingenuous there.
Go ahead and get this motion, I got a question.
All right, all in favor, should the public say nay?
Nay.
Aye.
We've been reading about the Whitmire property, and you all had a special meeting, I guess.
Yes, sir.
So, where does that put, the skate park?
The skate park, the skate park, we are still on the go, we're hoping to have it.
At the Whitmire property?
Yes, sir, right where, right where we've always planned for it to be, right where the design was from. So, we are moving forward with that, we are working with Artisan Skate Parks, they are the design builder that we chose, they actually worked with the pillar design group who actually did the design, they worked closely together. We right now have approximately two hundred thousand dollars raised, including your contributions, our contributions, and the fund raising that's been done. Hopefully, construction will start sometime in late May to June, because that's how far out we had to schedule with Artisan Skate Parks, but we are working on it.
They give you a firm quote?
Two sixty.
Two sixty.
Mm-hmm.
Let's have bathrooms?
No, that's not bathrooms, that's the skate park itself. So, again, having the opportunity to partner with the county, we can look at potential other recreational opportunities on that property. So, I think this, this is a good first step with our MOU on that property, and then looking at what we can do into the future on the Whitmire property, because the focus that we were given from the town council was to look at a portion of that property to be recreation and to look at that first, so.
All right. Thank you all for organizing our meeting later this month, we're looking forward to meeting with you. Thank you all for being here.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys, for being here.
Thank you, Jim.
Thank you. All right. Well, that's, well, that's what we're just talking about, joint meeting with the towns of Franklin Highlands on September twenty-second. Mr. Manager, you just want to address that quickly?
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman, we will recess this meeting when we finish here tonight, and we will reconvene at six o'clock PM at Town Hall located at ninety-five East Main Street, Franklin, North Carolina, Route seven-three-four.
All right. All right, Commissioner Young, had a quick item you wanted to?
Yeah. I also received the same email that Hazel, I think this whole board received the email from the sweet lady talking about the handicap access at the charters. And I just didn't want that to go unrecognized. Is there some way we can maybe assign to pursue, explore options?
Our rec director is right now talking with the, the people at the federal level, is grant funding available, and he actually came to me, because he got the email as well. He's already reached out to them, and that conversation's already in the works. I just didn't want to.
Yep.
Yes, sir. I'll, I'll keep y'all posted.
Mr. Shills can attest, when we've been to these meetings, that that's the first thing questioned about Franklin Hospital. Are our kids still at middle grade and?
An MVI.
Because there's nothing ADA at the hospital. So, I think that's a section of the population that deserves the credit.
All right, consent agenda, unless there's something, we'll take a motion to approve with, including the addition of pledge movement number fifty-seven, which should be in front of you. Now, if there's something, okay, we got a motion by Commissioner Young. Second by Commissioner Higden, all in favor?
Aye. Just a follow-up question, Mr. Chairman?
Sure.
What about, where exactly are we at with the rec, with the athletic building at Middle Grade School?
Athletic, we put project out to bid.
And I believe Mr. Jack said something's coming in ASAP.
We got, let me take care of this motion, we're on the floor, you good with the motion? Consent agenda, everybody in favor? Okay, go ahead, now your question.
Put out to bid. It's put out to bid, and when it be supposed to be?
I believe.
It's supposed to be in this week or next week?
Before October, we'll have a report in October.
As October meeting.
We put out to bid, and then we get the three minimum bids, so we had to rebid, so we had to work to rebid.
Now, the second time you bid, if you don't get the three bids in, you can reduce.
You can award it.
Yeah, you can award it.
Even if we get one bid, the second round, we can still award it, so. Probably Kevin.
It's a needy, we were up there this weekend, that middle grade school, that's definitely needy.
All right, closed session, Mr. Attorney, Mr. Manager?
No, no.
No, that's good.
Motion to.
Like that, yeah, sorry, motion to recess until Thursday, September twenty-second, two thousand twenty-two, for a joint meeting with the Franklin Town Council and the Town of Highlands Board of Commissioners at Franklin Town Hall, ninety-five East Main Street, six PM, Franklin, North Carolina. Motion by Commissioner Higden, second by Commissioner Young, all in favor? Aye.
Thank you.